Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the City of Lebanon Plan Commission meeting on October 17, 2022. And we'll have the opening to call the meeting to order. And would you call the roll call, please?
John Lastly?
Here.
Dan Bayshore?
Here.
Kevin Krulik?
Here.
Keith Campbell?
Here.
Ashley Paddock? Absent. Brian Tandy?
Here.
Ali Mullen?
Here.
Lori Gross?
Here.
Okay. Now, we have the approval of the 2023 meeting dates.
Make a motion that we approve the 2023 meeting dates.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone else have questions? We have three of those dates are Tuesdays, I might add, okay? January the 17th, February the 21st, and June 20th. Those are all Tuesdays. All the rest of them are Mondays, okay? Call the roll, please.
John Lastly?
Yes.
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ali Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, we need, everybody had a chance to read the minutes for September?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes. Those are written for September the 19th.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. But call the roll, please.
John Lastly?
Yes.
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ali Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, on your own business, this item is continued from the August 15, 2022 meeting. Docket number 22-50, Auburn Meadows LLC requesting a five-year extension of their primary plat approval for Auburn Meadows subdivision. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Commission members, good evening. Just to do a quick recap, this, we've had discussion on this a couple other times, but it's been a couple of months. So Auburn Meadows had their original primary plat approval in 2004. Sections one, two, and three were approved in 2005, 2016, and 2020 respectively. And there are one, possibly two sections remaining to develop on that. As if you recall, we had a little bit of a discussion about the UDO and what it suggests in terms of approvals for primary plats. And the UDO suggests that she'll be effective for a period of 12 months unless the commission grants an extension of time. So the application for secondary plat should be submitted to the commission, and if it's not received within 12 months, it would need an extension. As I'd suggested previously, that it's a little bit vague in what that means, whether an entire development would need to have be recorded within that 12 months, or whether, if they get that first phase done, whether it's fine for the subsequent phases. So because we lack a little bit of detail on that, I thought it was just best to go ahead and just come back to the commission for an extension. They have requested a five-year extension, which would allow them to finish it out if it were, say, two sections, allow them to finish out those two sections over a five-year time period, certainly with a little bit of, a little bit of extra space in there just in case something changes in the economy and they have to delay one of those sections or something like that. We have discussed a couple of times that they're working on an easement, an easement for the development Angel Lee Gardens to the south. My understanding is they have agreed in principle on that easement as of last week, and the document actually was signed earlier today. So that was, has all been worked out. I don't think it's fully executed, but there is a signature from the Auburn Meadows developer on that document as of this evening. So, so it has to work its way through the final approvals and signatures and get executed, but they, they, they are making progress there and should have something fully executed by the end of the week. So with that, again, then staff has recommended approval of a five-year extension for the primary plat for Auburn Meadows. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any before we turn it over to the Auburn Meadows developers, the applicants, to update you.
Anyone on the board have a question for Ben? If not, the applicant come forward, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Bill Tully, and as Ben just informed you, we do have the, we've executed the documents today and the, on the primary easement for the firm coming in from the south of us there. And I would, you know, humbly request the approval of a five-year extension in light of the fact of supply chain challenges that we face today, plus the fact that interest rates of just now for first mortgages for 30 years have gone to 7% and some possible chance that they may be going higher. My realtor here that's with me tonight tells me that sales have almost come to a stop. I can understand that when you're looking at a $400,000 home at 7% interest, that's a pretty good bite today. So I feel confident that we can do that in probably in five years, but it's probably going to be structured now in two phases instead of one that we were thinking about maybe this last summer when interest rates were much more reasonable and didn't have the supply chain issues that we've got today. But I'm told by our contractors now that if I had all the approvals tonight on the future plans, that I'm one year out on some of the supplies right now. And so we do need the request that you would give us that five-year extension to get that subdivision complete.
And we entertain a motion for a public hearing. We have, that's right, need a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come forward and speak?
Since I've been here a couple times, I thought I'd come back and just confirm for you. Mr. Tully's son did sign the easement documents today. My understanding is they're going to be delivered on Thursday, and Four Star will go through its corporate process to get signatures, but I think we're pretty well squared away. So I just wanted to report to you that they had been cooperative in getting that done, and thank you to Auburn Meadows developer and Mr. Tully and his son, and thank you to the Plan Commission.
Excuse me, man, for the record, would you give your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa Gerard, Four Star Group.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ben, I got a quick question. As far as us?
Hang on. Anybody else want to come up and speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, okay? Hey, Ben?
Sorry. As far as if we extend this five-year like you're asking, is there a way we can put that that is limited to that five-year, or is that something that come five years from now, they can come and ask for another five years?
I don't know why we would limit them. I mean, all that would require them to do is just come back and submit a new primary plat for approval, which will look exactly the same as the primary plat we already had. So it's just, it's just their request would just be for a different thing, but it would be the same result. So yeah, that's, so even if, even if you were to not approve an extension tonight, they would just have to come back and submit a primary plat for approval, which would come back to you guys, and it would look, it would be the same primary plat that we've already got. So it's just a different process, would end up with the same result. So you could do that, but I don't know that it really would change much. This, I mean, certainly all these residential developments are subject to what's happened in the economy. If it slows down even more than it has, if we actually go into a little bit of recession, it may take some more time. Plus also keep in mind that they don't record the secondary plats until after the construction of that section is complete. So like Mr. Tully suggested, it could be 12 months before he gets his storm sewer pipe. So it could be 16, 18 months for the construction of that, that first of two sections actually complete, and they record it. So by the time they get to that final section, it could be three-plus years before they might be recording that at a minimum, and given changes, it could take even longer. So you could certainly, you could certainly try to, try to limit it, but it would just change what they're requesting to you with the same outcome.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board to Ben? And are you any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none or hearing any, how we entertain a motion?
I'd motion to approve docket 22-50, the five-year extension for the primary plat Auburn Meadows.
Second.
We have a second. Would you call the roll, please?
John Lastly?
Aye.
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik? Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ali Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Okay. Next item on is docket number 2662. It's Cedars of Lebanon Business Park requesting primary plat approval of 115.76 acres industrial development. The property is generally located east of South State Road, 39th South of Tire Road, and west of John Shaw Road.
Just a quick clarification, that is a typo. That is actually, the docket number is 2262 rather than 2662. I just noticed that earlier today when I was printing the agenda out. So it is docket number 2262 rather than 26.
2262.
Very good. I'll give you a quick overview of the site and the project. Here is the site outlined in yellow. This is south of the interstate, just off of State Road 39, which you see to the west of the site here. Tire Road runs along the north side of the site here, and then John Shaw Road runs along the east side of the site here. As Mr. Campbell mentioned, it is about 115-acre site. It is currently zoned general industrial, industrial zoning classification, so it does have the appropriate zoning for the proposed development. What this is before you hear tonight would be the primary plat, which is a plan commission approval process. And then, once they come in with individual site developments, this will come back to you as an individual development plan application for each of those individual sites. So I'll kind of show you their overall concept here in a second, one, the layout of the lots, and then also just a really general concept of a layout of some, what some buildings might look like. Keep in mind, though, those buildings, we haven't reviewed the sites for adherence to the UDO, landscape standards, buffer standards, any of that. So this, so that's not before you hear tonight. Really, all you're approving is the lot layout that they propose on the primary plat. We'll get to those details on what the buildings look like, what the site looks like in landscaping at a later date. So this is the overall site, as I mentioned, and let me see if I grabbed the right one. This will show you what the lot layout looks like. This is the primary plat. So they've divided up that overall 115-acre parcel into five separate parcels. Parcel one is kind of the triangular area to the, to the south end of the site that you see here, and the overall. And I think they intend at some point later on to probably subdivide that further once they get additional tenants identified, but for right now, they want to leave that a larger 70-acre parcel. And then what you have here are those parcels two through five are between 10 and 13-acre sites that you see split up right here. And this is kind of a general, like I said, a very general concept of how this could lay out with three industrial buildings on parcels two, three, and four, and then the detention facility on parcel number five here to the west. Their outlet for the stormwater actually goes to the northwest, so that would be the low point there, that lake, that pond there. So that's why that, why they've done that there. Again, as I've mentioned, this, we have not reviewed this for adherence with the UDO in terms of setbacks, buffer yards, landscaping, or anything, but this just kind of only shows you generally what they're talking about. These buildings are, I'm going to zoom in here a little bit so I can read it. The footprints they're showing here are about 150,000 square feet, so they're not, they're not massive industrial buildings, but they're a little bit larger in terms of 150,000. So this is just kind of showing generally they might, what they might be able to put on the site. They're not looking to do big, massive warehouse buildings. They're looking for something in that 100,000 to 200,000 square foot range, at least on these sites that they're showing here. So again, as I mentioned once before, you tonight is the primary plat, which is what this document is here, is approval of the, just essentially the lot layout. And what we do in terms of reviewing that is looking at adherence with the standards for the general industrial zoning district, which requires minimum lot size of five acres. And as I mentioned, these range anywhere from 10 up to 70 acres, so they do meet all of the minimum lot size requirements. Minimum lot width of 200 feet. The smallest lot width here is about 600 feet, so they do meet the minimum lot width requirements. And in terms of the setbacks, they're not showing setbacks here, but they intend to meet all of the required setbacks of the general industrial zoning district when they do develop these sites. And we review and make sure that when they do have proposed buildings on here, they do meet all the appropriate setbacks, buffer yards, landscaping, building designs, et cetera, that are all required for any industrial development in the city of Lebanon. But in terms of what's before you here tonight, the primary plat and the lot layout, it does meet all the applicable standards for primary planning. And so with that, in review, the submitted primary plat is presented. Staff finds compliance with, with unified development ordinance requirements for the subject site and recommends approval contingent on the following condition. And a lot of these TAC comments are actually addressing some of the, kind of the initial development plans for the sites where they're showing offsite utilities, et cetera. And so they're more, they're more construction focused than they are plat focused, but we have indicated on here the condition that they address any, any remaining TAC comments prior to the development plan approvals for any of the individual sites, which will come later. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone on the board have a question for Ben? Okay, not hearing any. How we have the applicant come forward, please?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Colby Price. I'm with Realty Link. We're the applicant and developer of the site. Ben did a pretty great job going over what we're here to ask you for, so I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have about the development as a whole or the plat that's in before you.
Anyone on the commission has a questions? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Exactly. What, what are you doing to do with the buildings? What, what's your plans for those?
So those buildings are, in their current state, are what I would call a speculative warehouse building. So as Ben mentioned, they're somewhere in the 100 to 150,000 square foot range. We actually have a design on the first two buildings, so I don't see those changing to get any larger. Our desire is not to build a large building here. They would be in that, that range. Obviously, that would be all those, those lots could accommodate square footage-wise anyways. So they would, they would be in the warehouse distribution, not, not heavy manufacturing or anything of that nature.
So they're mostly going to be a warehouse, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Correctly, selling the properties is a rail line.
Likely, but at this time, that's a little bit unknown. As Ben mentioned, that property to the south, we're not plating at this point any further than what it is. He's correct. There's probably a plan at some point to further subdivide what is parcel one with potentially a rail-served site. But again, that would be in the logistics arena, not, not a heavy manufacturing use.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, anyone else on the board have a question? Not seeing or hearing anything, we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience would like to come up and speak on the project? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, okay? Ben?
I don't have anything additional to add. I was just going to come check, see if there weren't any additional questions. Anybody had for me?
Anyone else have question for Ben at this point? We'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the subject development plan contingent on the following conditions, that the applicant addresses any remaining city of Lebanon TAC Advisory Committee comments and submitted development plan approval for individual lot development prior to application for any building permits or site improvements.
Okay, thank you. We have a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
John Lastly?
Yeah.
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Kevin Krulik?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ali Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Next item is the new business. Docket number 2266, updating the Lebanon Comprehensive Plan to Include the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. Ben?
I will be very brief with my introduction here, and then turn it over to Derek and the folks from Kimley Horn to introduce this for you, just a little bit about process. This is an updated bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the overall city. That, that plan was last done in 2015, so about seven years old, and as you guys are all aware, a lot has changed in the city over the last seven years. Certainly, things like Waterford weren't contemplated when the original bicycle and pedestrian master plan was done, so that's a major part of the community moving forward. So we wanted to make sure and incorporate all the things like that that are happening now into the overall planning for the city, and certainly evaluate some of the recommendations we made last time and update those as necessary. So in terms of the actual process itself, the bicycle and pedestrian master plan is incorporated as part of the overall City of Lebanon Comprehensive Plan. And so what we'd be doing here tonight is we'd be essentially be amending our existing comprehensive plan to include this new 2022 bicycle and pedestrian master plan. That process requires a recommendation from the Plan Commission to forward it to the council, and the council would adopt it as a resolution, amending the comprehensive plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Derek to do a quick intro, and then on to Kimley Horn.
Good evening, Commission. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak a little bit tonight. However, Ben stole most of my thunder, so I'll keep this pretty brief. So as you mentioned, the, the plan that we are updating was adopted in 2015, and that was actually our first bicycle and pedestrian master plan for the city. So committee members started meeting back in 2014 to form that. You know, it took about a year. We called that the Active Living Committee at that point. They were, it was a great, you know, slice of, of the citizens at that point. And we got the job done. We got the plan adopted in 2015. And really, you know, as far as the city goes, we've only been investing in trails since the end of 2015. Sidewalks about the same time up until that point, the city wasn't investing hardly a dime into any of those amenities. So in the, you know, six years, we've come a really long way, in my opinion. And just to give you some of the highlights, I think the, the initial plan was a great jumping off point. It gave us kind of a ballpark to, to work towards. Some of the things that have come out of that plan, one of, one of the big ones was a bicycle boulevard from East Street connecting Memorial Park to Abner Longley. And a bicycle boulevard utilizes on-street trails and some bumpouts and curves and one-ways, and really starts to manipulate the way traffic flow is. Great idea at the time. We thought that's what, how we were going to connect things. Little did we know, opportunity would come around for us to put the northeast street side path in, trail, off-street trail, when we redid East Street. So Memorial Park got connected to the square via an off-street trail. Then fast forward to the, the square renovations. Well, why don't we bring the Big Four into the square via off-street as well? So we've done both of those. Both of those ideas were, were in the original plan. They just weren't really off-street trails. So we've, we've hit the mark, more or less, and improved that. So as far as trails go, those are the two big ones. The other player in this, which doesn't get a lot of love, is the sidewalk improvements that we've done. Just to give you an idea of some of the big projects that we have done, we filled in a lot of the gaps that were out there. Elizaville Road was a big gap for us, all the way from Anderson Lane basically down to Grant Street where it turns into the administration building. There, there was no sidewalk in 2015 there. That was really our big, our first big project. Along with that was Grant Street connecting where the tennis courts are up to that Elizaville Road intersection. Lafayette Avenue from, all the way from the railroad bridge, Hoy Avenue, up to basically Riley Road. There was never a sidewalk there before. We've done that. Camp Street was another, a little small section. Camp Street from Lebanon Street to the Children's Home Admin Building. There was no sidewalk there, so another gap that we have filled in. Another, you know, some of the other ones, Walnut Street, Hamilton Street, on the southeast side of town here, off of V Street, there's actually connectivity now, ADA compliant connectivity, and that's what the goal is with a lot of this, to connect East Street over to Noble Street, which, you know, future plans will be Noble Street down to the Hot Pond, the Old Conservation Club, et cetera. North Park Street, Williams Street. Some of the theme you see here in our initial wave of money spent was to not only fill in the gaps, but you know, give people, give students, kids, a safe place to walk if they're, if they're, if they're going to school, as you start to get closer to the schools. Trip hazards throughout the community in many subdivisions. We've gone through and cleaned up all the trip hazards. Glendale Drive in Edgewood, there was a stretch in Glendale, Glendale Drive that was an absolute disaster. Soft maples, all in the tree lawn between the curb and the sidewalk. And if you would have seen that project, it was a very short stretch, probably six homes, but it was, by the time contractors were out there cleaning up roots and removing trees, and it was, it looked like a war zone. Got that fixed. Syracuse Drive was our other big one. Two-year project, so Lebanon Utilities replaced a water main on Syracuse Drive in Northfield. They, they did one side of the street because the water main was on that side. We dropped in and did the other side of the street. So that was, that was a two-year project. Since that time, we've spent one, roughly $1.1 million in sidewalk installation and repair in the community. There's 100 miles, actually, there's more than 100 miles now. In 2015, there was 100 miles of existing sidewalk. So that $1.1 million sounds like a ton of money. I know it does, but we're just now starting to put a dent in this. We have a long, long way to go, and just when we think we're done, we're going to have to start over. So this, this is never ending. Another big program that was introduced out of these conversations in the initial plan, and then I'll turn it over to Kimley Horn, I promise, I'll quit talking, is the Sidewalk Cost Share Program. We've had tremendous success with the Sidewalk Cost Share Program. So if you're not familiar with that, it's, it's gone through a few changes, but its current state is, it's a 50-50 program. If, if a property owner wants to replace their sidewalk, we get, we have a contractor that has a contract with us for the entire year at a certain rate. That property owner comes in, applies, we go out and measure, give them a quote. If they want to participate in the program, they come in, write us a check for 50% of the cost, we pay for the other 50, and they get put on the list. So those numbers are pretty impressive as well. The Cost Share Program, since its inception in 2017, the city has put in $170,000, and property owners have roughly put in $170,000. So we're talking about $340,000 worth of sidewalk improvement with partnerships from the community. So things like that are happening from our, our existing plan, and you know, you're going to see some really cool stuff from the update here, and we hope to keep BML move down the road on this. So with that, I will introduce Brandon from Kimley Horn, is who the, the firm is, who has done this plan for us, and he'll go over some of the detail of the new plan. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Derek. Yeah, all very good, good stuff, very good information to go through. Really cool to hear all that information. So good, good evening, members of the commission. My name's Brandon Shreg. I'm with Kimley Horn. I'm joined with my colleague Charlotte Hodson here this evening, and if my voice will hold out from this great allergy season we're, we're within here, I might be able to make it through this. So I want to talk to you about what is in the current plan that we've, we've put together here, and had the pleasure of working with, you know, the, the city on, so working with Derek and Ben and Kevin specifically, and Mr. Joe LaPage as well. So going through this, you know, just want to talk about kind of the process in, in detail here. So what we like to do is start by reviewing previous plans. So the 2015 plan that Derek was talking about, we, we kind of dove into that. We also looked at the bicycle pedestrian master plan that was recently completed for the business park, for example, that was adopted in 2021. But then we start to look at right-of-way's and really get into the details on, you know, what do the existing corridors look like? As, as Derek mentioned, the previous 2015 plan really kind of focused on on-street facilities. So you know, the shift has kind of been made towards more of the, the side paths, and how can we use the, you know, the area outside of the curb line, if you will, for, for the... So we do, you know... So we do, you know, parking inventory and sidewalk studies, you know, just looking at utility corridors, all that kind of stuff at a pretty high level. It's a planning study, but, you know, we do get into all that information. We also want to take into account that the city has prepared some awesome branding guidelines for trail and signage, for trail signage. So we make sure we incorporate that work into the effort as well. Public engagement, always a big thing. It's great to hear the community's feedback and how that kind of guides plan development and how we can, you know, make sure that we're listening to the community and getting the right connectivity in the right spot. So we had stakeholder meetings. We had a couple pretty good-sized stakeholder meetings when we started back in July 2021, and then we kind of updated that concept in March of 2022. We did hold a public open house at Clues on the square in May of this year, and pretty well-attended, had some good feedback. As you can see, we had some write-in applications there, as well as we had some mapping. People could kind of draw routes on a map, for example, to kind of show us as the planners where they would like to see connectivity. Throughout all of that, we did a couple of public surveys, online surveys, and, you know, we find those very valuable as well, just to get the sentiment and, you know, where everybody in the community would like to see, you know, the direction of the plan headed. So we really jumped into the public engagement piece of this. Just real quickly on some of the facility types that are in the plan. So as Derek mentioned, sidewalks, you know, that is a staple in the plan. And then looking at that kind of side path and trail like you have on East Street, for example, the new NLT project there, you know, just a great facility that's gone in there. So we look at that. That actually makes up a good portion of your updated plan, this kind of side path concept, using that, using the existing right-of-way to put in a wider sidewalk that can then be shared use. Other items, you know, the urban kind of share-o, kind of that bike boulevard concept Derek mentioned earlier is on the left, and then your typical sort of greenway trail where you're, you know, you're out next to, whether it's in a creek bed, creek location corridor, something of that nature, but you're not amongst traffic, vehicular traffic in that scenario. So those are the big facility types that made it into the plan. The actual master plan, the lines on the map, for example, pretty small to see here. Understand that you all have this in your packets, but, you know, really focusing on the connectivity and, as Derek also mentioned, and maybe Ben, you know, Waterford, for example. So that wasn't really realized in 2015. So how do we connect down to that? Everything that the state has planned kind of north of the city, for example, how do we connect to that? So this pretty much shows red lines being existing facilities. Green is that kind of side path, for example. Yellow is the bike boulevard share-o situation, and then we have some blue in there for sidewalks as well. One of the really interesting things that we wanted to do in this, and it worked out very well with the connectivity options, is create a access to a trail or a shared-use facility, a bike facility of some sort, sidewalk. So every resident has that within a quarter of a mile radius. So this red shading that you see in the graphic up here on the screen kind of shows how that all works, where, you know, our connectivity plan, if you kind of bubble that out over a quarter of a mile, we pretty much have the bulk of the city covered. So we're pretty proud about that. Lastly, kind of wrapping up, you know, the priority segment plan. So what we like to do then is take that master plan, those lines on the map, and then kind of divide that into segments and working with the city, trying to figure out where those priorities are and having that all kind of put together. As you can see, 1 through 15 here are kind of the top 15 priorities, projects. So taking those kind of longer stretches of corridors, anything like that, and dividing that into kind of bite-sized pieces and projects. So, you know, for example, what we'd like to do as well is then put those into cut sheet, what we call kind of cut sheet. So it's a project sheet that just has everything you want to know about that particular bite-sized segment, some existing conditions, some narrative about that, a bit of a routing plan, and then, you know, that can be easily used for grant funding, for example. So that's a nice kickstart for that. We also threw in the Sam Ralston Road Trailhead. Part of our plan was to look at, or part of our scope of work was to have two implementation projects to look at in deeper dive. So Anderson Lane on the north side of town, and then also the Sam Ralston Trailhead was really deemed the two projects to really look at further. Anderson Lane, for example, you know, what we heard in a lot of the meetings and the feedback and in the survey, for example, and actually, I think we heard this day one when we sat down with everybody, was we have to figure out a way to connect to the YMCA, for example. So, you know, having that connection that's kind of routed here on the plan from Anderson Lane, you know, we really feel that that would be a great connection to get a lot of residential communities there up to the YMCA in a safe manner with the off-street road, or off-street bike facility. The Anderson Lane project itself would be actually having, taking some of that road width, there's a lot of width there in that pavement, taking some of that, putting in a curb in that road lane, restriping, making it all, you know, safer vehicular use, but then also using that extra pavement space as a bike facility. So, you know, we've looked at that at a conceptual level, feel that that works and fits. So Anderson Lane could have that kind of retrofit and then also that connection to the YMCA. So that was kind of our first implementation project. The second one was looking at Sam Ralston Road Trailhead and adding a few more amenities to that, you know, having the, you know, you have the art there, for example. Some of the pavement needs a little bit of work, and then some of the parking spaces could be reconfigured to be a bit safer. So in doing all that, you know, adding some public restrooms, that sort of thing. So this is what kind of came out of the plan. This is our second sort of implementation project. A third one I just want to make note of is just something that came up in the process. It's a CSX Art Initiative that's going on within the city, so those murals. So we kind of see this all as one sort of placemaking sort of initiative as well with the bike-ped connectivity. So having this in here, we just made sure to note that in the report. I think the last thing here, just so you know, like, for example, on the NLT project, the crosswalks, for example, kind of have that Big Four trail like you see in the downtown, that ladder pattern. So one of the things that we did is came up with those design guidelines and standards for trails and bike-ped connectivity throughout the city. So when you do have a new project and it goes in, it looks similar to what you've seen on the north side of the city or the south side or something like that. So there's continuity, and you have that comprehensive feel throughout the facility. So I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the plan.
Anyone on the board have questions?
I've got a question as far as where golf carts fit into that. Are they allowed to drive on the wider side paths that are 10 to 12 feet, or are they still only allowed for the road?
So my understanding is that they're not allowed on the side paths.
Even if they're the wider ones?
Yeah, it's actually, the stance the city is taking right now is no motorized vehicles at all on our off-street trails. Golf carts, if they choose to try to traverse the city, need to stay in the street.
Anyone else on the board?
I have a question on the Anderson Lane section. Does that go up on Elm, all the way up to 300?
Does it go all the way to 300?
I know it goes up Elm Swamp, for sure, yes. Okay. Does it go up to 300 north?
It does not. So you're talking about the connectivity between, the gap between Chadwick and Auburn Meadows, I presume?
Correct.
Yeah. It's on our radar, but the bike trail itself that we're talking about here on Anderson Lane is between Elm Swamp Road and essentially Lebanon Street.
So I'm just looking at, because I know we got Auburn Meadows up there, and Angelia Gardens is going to be right there at that corner soon.
Angelia Gardens will put a sidewalk in, so as development starts to fill in, they're going to help us out a little bit. And at that point, you know, the gaps become smaller and smaller. But we are doing a right-of-way study along that stretch right now, just to see what the feasibility looks like for us to be able to get the right-of-way to put a sidewalk in and connect Auburn Meadows. So as far as sidewalk connectivity goes, that is certainly on the radar.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Derek. The 250, is it CB 250, south of, or, I'm sorry, 250 going towards the west, okay? If they redo the sidewalk, I mean, there's no sidewalks there, correct?
So you're talking west of Lebanon Street, west of there, yes?
Yes. There is none there, okay. So if that's the case, and we end up doing new sidewalks and so forth there, will they also redo the road at the same time? Is that something that has been talked about, or?
We've definitely talked about it. There is some sidewalk on 250. You know, you have sidewalk there where the duplexes are, the Shaker Square duplexes. You have some sidewalk that actually trail now on the north side of the road from Sunbrook Villas. So it's starting to fill in a little bit. I would, I have not heard much conversation about rebuilding 250 yet at this point. It's certainly going to be on the radar at some point. Kevin might be able to talk about this a little bit further and what that looks like as far as planning-wise, but if and when the city does jump in and rebuild that road, anytime we're going to rebuild a road at this point, sidewalks and trails are going to be added.
Earlier in the year, we received an announcement that we won a federal grant to reconstruct Whit Road from Lafayette Avenue to just north of Austin Drive. We're already making plans to submit what we would call Phase Two, which would be to continue that up to 250 north. This next grant cycle that opens up this fall, and then even looking at a Phase Three, which would be 250 all the way over to 39. The only caveat to that is, you know, our Phase One money doesn't come available till 2027. The next grant cycle is 2028. The third grant cycle will be 2029. So it would take us a little bit of time to accomplish those under those current grant structures, you know, but there's nothing to say right now what our financial picture will look like in the next five years. Maybe we can expedite those things. But it definitely, definitely is something on our radar. In fact, we've submitted, we submitted 250 for that same grant program twice previously before we decided to switch gears and try the other end of the corridor and submit Whit Road, and we're successful.
So would it be safe to say that we would not be doing any type of sidewalk work or anything, or at least if we are, we're taking into consideration the widening or the redoing of the road?
Yeah, no, we would. Any road project that we would do, and I apologize, I refer to them as a road project, it's a complete street project. The Whit Road project has a 10-foot multi-use separated trail on one side and a five-to-six-foot sidewalk on the other side. So any future Whit Road phases or any future 250 north phases would have the same amenities.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? On hearing, we're seeing any, we'll close that part, and we'll open up to the public hearing. Anyone like to come forward? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Okay. Now I would entertain a motion. Permission?
I would motion to send Docket 22-66, the Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan with a favorable recommendation to the Council.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
John Lasley?
Yes.
Dan Bayshore?
Yes.
Kevin Krulick?
Yes.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Brian Tandy?
Yes.
Ally Mullen?
Yes.
Lori Gross?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it. Do you have any other questions, Ben? Anything else? Okay, the next meeting for the Plan Commission is scheduled for Monday, November 21, 2022. Okay? And our last motion is to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.